Good evening. Thank you for being here tonight. It is January the thirteenth, uh seventeen, two thousand and twenty-three. Our thoughtful day today is the most important thing in communication is hearing what is, hearing what isn't said. That's an author unknown. We're gonna go ahead and officially call this meeting to order tonight. Tonight we have a special guest with us tonight. Mr. Gabriel Stowall, if you would, please come on up, sir, pastor. He serves in different capacities, served as the pastor of Macedonia Family Church, and he also served as the editor of the Covington News. Thank you so much for being here with us tonight, sir. We ask if you would just bless our community and come your own way.
Yes, sir. Thank you Chairman Baines and to all this, all of these that make up this great commission. I'm grateful tonight to be here, bringing you greetings again from Macedonia Family Church. I pastor in Augusta, but we're also making plans to expand our ministry here in Covington. And of course, I am the proud editor and publisher of the Covington News. So again, thank you so much. And let's go ahead and get ready to pray. Father, tonight we come to you and we just wanna first say thank you. Even in this time and in this place where we are gathered to take care of business that pertains to the functioning of this great county, it's not robbery for us tonight to pause and to acknowledge you and to say that you are worthy of our acknowledgement. You're worthy of our praise. You're worthy of all that we have to give to you tonight. And so, Lord, before we ask for anything, we just wanna once again pause and say thank you for everything that you are. And we know because of who you are, we stand where we are and we can do what we do just by your grace and only because of it. And so, Lord, I ask tonight that your spirit would reign heavily in this place. God, I know this isn't a church building, but your word does tell us that if we are believers in you, you, we are the church. And so, God, I pray that you would allow all of us to conduct ourselves in such manner. I pray, Father, that your spirit would guide everything that's spoken, every thought that's thought, every outcome that happens. And we pray, Father, that when we walk out of here, we'll be able to walk out and know that your spirit of unity has been among us. Forgive us for our sins, cleanse our hearts of unrighteousness, make us holy and acceptable in your sight. And God, we give your name the glory, honor, and praise, your do-it-all, in the matchless name of Jesus the Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Hold on one second, sir. Thank you so much. We greatly appreciate you being here. And I do wanna make that correction. That's right, you are the head honcho over at the Covington News. You are the publisher. So thank you so much for being here. I do have a token of appreciation that I wanna send to you.
Okay.
I'll do my best, sir. Absolutely, absolutely. Yes, sir. Commissioner Mason will lead us in our pledge tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much also, Commissioner. Commissioners, we do have item number seventeen, item number seventeen that we do wanna remove from the agenda tonight. Item number seventeen. And also, under consent agenda, Viewpoint Health Board of Directors and Sheriff Brown is asking that we appoint Branny Birch as the representative from the sheriff's office tonight. Ms. Birch, is you here tonight? If you, if you would stand, thank you so much for your service. Thank you so much for your willing to serve this community. We greatly appreciate all that you do. Thank you. Commissioner, with that being said, I seek a motion that we approve, please. It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards II by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? Your pass is five oh. Thank you so much. This is an opportunity that we allow citizens to talk about agenda topics only. Agenda topics only. You have three minutes to do so. If you would, please come at this time, state your name and your address for the record, please. Agenda topics only. Agenda topics only. Thank you so much. Next, we have the chairman's report. Tonight, I have asked, let's see, Mr. Chester Clegg, if you would, please come up tonight. And Ms. Wendy, ma'am, if you would please come up tonight as well. I asked them to come up tonight and give us an update. As you know, there were so many impacted by the storm that hit on the southeastern part of the county. And they have been working around the clock. We're gonna ask, if you would, please, ma'am, please, sir, please put your cellphones on silent, please, as we try to handle the business of the county. We greatly appreciate it. But guys, thank you so much for all that you do. We know you have been working some extreme hours to make, to make sure that citizens in this community. Guys, we wanna ask again, if you would, please, ma'am, please, sir, put your cellphones on silent. And so, we're gonna ask if you would, give us an update tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, there was quite a large storm that came through on Thursday late afternoon in southern part of Newton County, in the Stewart area. And Chris Malcolm, Public Works Director, is not here tonight, but he had anticipated from the reports that there would be some, could be some damage in the county. And so, around five o'clock or so, when the storm hit, Chris was on his way down, down south to see what the damage was. He had seven, he had kept the crews at the shop just in case he needed them to keep them from going home. So he had seven crews on site within minutes of the storm damage. And what, when he saw what, when we saw what had happened, he called in another five crews to start clearing the roads. And there were about fourteen roads that were completely blocked, not just by one tree or some limbs or anything. We're talking about tree after tree, large pine trees and oak trees down across the road that need to be cleared. So by early Friday morning, Public Works had cleared and opened most of the fourteen roads that had been blocked. And then, of course, Friday morning, well, Thursday night, Snappy Shoals EMC had a few crews come in. They kicked off at about twelve, and then Public Works crews kept working. And then they brought in, gosh, I don't know, maybe even a hundred crews Friday and Saturday to try to get the power back on. Now, what they're telling us is there were more than two hundred poles that were broken off, power poles. So it was quite a job for them to get, to get the power back on by Sunday.
And that was a record, I'm told.
That's what I, that's what they were saying. So on Sunday and Monday, Chris helped EMA with, Chris Malcolm, with the damage assessment on the houses that had been damaged. And most of the, it was a bit of an odd storm, but most of the damage was to the trees, which then fell on houses and fell on cars and across the road. There weren't, there were a few, there's some wind damage on some of the houses, but mostly with the trees hitting the homes. So we estimate, I mean, there were thousands of trees down. And we estimate, just in the, the right of way alone, we're looking at probably a thousand plus truckloads of debris that will need to be removed and stayed somewhere down in the area over the next few weeks, as Public Works works every day from here on out to try to clear that debris off the right of way, out of the road, mostly out of the road, but we gotta get it off the right of way.
Good evening. Based on these preliminary damage assessments, we were able to turn these figures into GEMA, which helped us to receive a presidential declaration for this storm. We received word of that declaration this morning. Newton County qualifies for public assistance as well as individual assistance. Public assistance will help the county as a whole with debris removal. Individual assistance will help our individual homeowners with things that they may need, especially if they have no insurance or they are underinsured. We sent out also some notification, Mr. Fabio sent that out for us today, of some resources we had received from GEMA to other individuals who may need cleanup with debris, those type of things. So we did receive word of that today. And I think we'll be able to, like Mr. Clegg said, you know, there's gonna be thousands of truckloads full of this debris. So here, most of the damage was contained within the south side. And you can kinda see where the red dots are. GIS provided those maps for us that, you know, there's a path of it. We have not received an official report from the National Weather Service, but from the preliminary reports, they're telling us that it was a possible EF2 tornado.
Thank you. I think, Mr. Commissioner Edwards wanted to say something.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I had the opportunity to drive down to this area Friday morning after I had learned of some of the destruction down that way. And until you get to the intersection of thirty-six and two-twelve, it kinda looked ordinary for the most part. And then it just, it was unbelievable. I've never seen anything like that in Newton County. And I've lived here all my life. So, and, but what I saw was Newton County's Public Works Department out working hard alongside by side with the EMC corporations, I think Central Georgia, Snappy Shoals, Georgia Power, all those folks out working hard trying to clear roads. There were people trapped lakeside, of course, you know, people trapped in driveways and trees on houses that damaged houses. And I spoke with Senator Brian Strickland Friday afternoon, and I think they were still trying to assess what happened in Newton County. I, I know they were aware, but I don't think they were aware of the magnitude, maybe until a little later on. And my understanding is that the president declared us a part of a national disaster.
He did.
Today, or this afternoon. And then I didn't know until you just said this morning, we, the state included us as well, which, which means a lot in terms of funding and recouping some of the money that we spent. But a big thanks to all our county employees. I'm just so thankful it was not more of a loss of life. I believe there was a gentleman working on power cables that maybe lost his life in Newton County. So so sorry to hear that, but there's still people without power as of this afternoon, I believe. And I know our power companies are, are working overtime to get that taken care of. It's just individual homes were devastated, power ripped out of the top of the homes. So I wanna thank the county one more time for the work our county employees did. Thank you very much.
Hold on one second, guys. So I wanna make sure we put the right information out. There was an individual that was, that lost his life while he was working. But I, he lived, he was a resident of Newton County, but I don't think he actually was working inside of Newton County when it happened. But we do wanna keep his family in our prayers. I think Commissioner Sanders has a question.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I wanna echo my colleague as well. Thank you for your service, and I am happy that it went the way it did, how you helped us out with everything. But I have a few questions, and I sent that out to the board. On the west side, and Mr. Nolan brought this up too, on the west side of Newton, and some of the east side as well, I had mentioned it as well, they weren't able to hear the sirens going off. What is the plan to possibly add more sirens so that the most dense area in the county will be able to hear the warnings? Or what marketing plan we have in place to get them on code red? Because there's not that many that's on there.
Right. As of, as of the sirens, we are researching and like, I think like we were talking before, that the outdoor weather sirens are intended for just that purpose. They're outdoor warnings for those individuals that may be outside to seek shelter. It's not intended for those inside your home to, to be able to hear. You know, insulation, things throughout the house, or just the noise of the storm alone inside a building, those outdoor weather sirens are not going to be heard. That's why we are trying to promote code red. That's also why, you know, most, most all of us have a weather app on our phone. I know during that tornado warning, my cell service provider was even sending things and warnings. So we, we, we have some ideas for some campaigns that we would like to, to implement, to be able to promote code red and get more of our citizens to register. You know, we're also interested if you wanna do a district-by-district campaign. You know, we'll be, we'll be happy to, to come out and, and do anything like that. If you have district-specific events, we'll be happy to come out and, and do those as well. So, you know, we're, we're willing to work with, with each one of our districts separately and our county as a whole.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, let me see. What I wanted to ask was, and I think you're absolutely right about the outside alarm that will make sure people know exactly what's, a tornado is coming whatsoever. But I was thinking, we had talked a little bit about adding more sirens. I think that's maybe the right word, sirens in our community. And we were supposed to at some point come up with a plan. Did we ever do that? Okay. So we needed, we needed as well as a plan. And I was hoping, I was hoping that the fire department would, along with whatever, make sure people have smoke detectors in their homes. I was hoping it'd be county-wide date, that all of what we need, you know, whether it's fire alarms and people homes who may not have them, because this is a season where, you know, when it gets cold, people make fires and homes catch on fire, that could save people lives. Let me know that the siren could save people lives. And I have liked, I have always liked to be proactive rather than reactive. And whatever if we need to do to get on behind the curve, whether in front of the curve, I think that we need to kinda just pull our heads together, all of us commissioners and it was, it was our employees, along with our road superintendent, Mr. Craig, get together and come with a plan, a county-wide plan, so we can address the problem hopefully before it happens. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Guys, let me just say that Mr. Clegg and Ms. Patterson, Sheriff Brown, Chief Connor, Snappy Shoals, and there was, there was even citizens that came out and started helping, the deputies. I'm gonna go on record thanking all of you for what you guys done. There were so many people trapped and couldn't get out. So many, there was kids that couldn't get home. So we greatly appreciate all that you do. And thank you, man. I just, you know, I came, I, when I went down, it was just so, man, it was just so devastating to see all of those trees laying on people homes. We, me and myself and Brian, we actually went out and talked to some of the citizens that was impacted by it. And they just kept saying, I just, I don't know what I'm gonna do. And so, we're just so thankful that, that declaration has been submitted and we can get the citizens some help. So thank you so much for all that you do. Greatly appreciate you. Next, Mr., it's just seven twenty-four. We have a few moments.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're gonna have three brief updates. We're gonna start off an update regarding our warming shelters from pasture lake.
Good evening. Greetings to all.
Good evening.
To have a chair, and to have a wonderful commissioners. I greet you this evening and come to share with you and give you a report on the, the daily operation of the warming shelters and how they ran at this time. It's gonna read a little something on the daily operation. All residents who reside at the warming centers are transported daily from the shelter, the main shelter, to the warming center location. They sleep there at night at the warming shelter. In the mornings, they are transported back to their main shelter, which is on Turner Lake. There, they get their meals, they get breakfast, lunch, and dinner. We have, when they get there in the morning, they have a hot breakfast, already ready. We have someone in place to do that. And they, they're at the shelter in Turner Lake. They are able to wash their laundry, because we have washers and dryers there. They are able to, to shower, because at the cousin location, there's no showers there. So they are able to shower there at the location at Turner Lake. Also, they are able to watch television. They are able to, those that, that are not seeking employment, are not working, are disabled, they stay there and they able to see television. We have a pub with a, and they love this, with a five p. They love that. And also, at the location there, at Hemlock, which is Rainbow, that's where we have also the refreshments for them at night, because they eat a early dinner. And that dinner is served at five-thirty in the evening. So we always have extra refreshments out for them. And also on the, we have sleeping carts. And I wanna thank this county for providing those sleeping carts for us. I wanna thank this county for, I'm sorry, for providing the funding to be able to do these things, to be able to bring our county residents that belongs to this county into a warm environment. I appreciate that so much, and I can't thank you enough. It means a lot, because it tells me a lot about your heart. It tells me how much you love this county when you reach out to those that are less fortunate than you or I or others. Also, in Cousin Jim, we have twenty, we have twenty-five carts there. We have twenty-four now, all are filled. I'm reaching out to you again, we need more. They, it's, the number is growing every night. And we have fourteen at the church, and they are all filled. They are all filled. So in saying that, we need more sleeping carts for the cousin Jim. Also, on the, we hired, most of the people that we hired are residents that are homeless, that are homeless. And I believe they, they need the first priority, get a job. And that is to help out the community. In doing so, they also, they, these residents that been hired, they help with security, they help with providing meals, they help with managing, majority of them are residents that are homeless. On the, the count, first of all, let me say this. I take my hat off to Sheriff Ezell Brown and his deputies. They have done all the, this security that at the cousin location. I take my hat off to Officer Maven. He do all the scheduling. He make sure all the deputies are in place and on time. And that is, that just, it's, everything helped been just running so smooth. I thank God for, chair, I mean, not chair, manager Sims. Because he helped work real close with me. And for him to leave his office and come over one day just to see the shelter and just see for himself what was the layout, how the operation ran at Turner Lake. And I thank you for doing that, Mr. Sims. On the count, and this is at Cousin Jim. From December twenty-first to January fifteenth, women's, we serve eighty-four. Men's, we serve a hundred and nineteen. Children, we serve eight. And that's a total of a hundred and eighty-three that is at the Cousin Jim. At the church, Rainbow, from December the fourteenth until January the fifteenth, we have served a hundred and sixteen women's, a hundred and thirty-six men's, and four children, which is a total of two hundred and fifty-six. And that is my report to you tonight. If you have any questions, please.
Thank you so much. We, hold on, Commissioner. Thank you. Hold on one second. It is seven-thirty. It is time for us to go on zoning. We're gonna go into zoning, and then we're gonna bring you back up and, and the commissioners get a chance to ask a couple of questions.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
So I'm gonna call you right back up in a few moments.
Thank you.
Mr. Appleweight, if you would, please come on up.
Thank you, Chairman.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman and Board of Commissioners. Today we have two zoning petitions. They are all business. They were previously heard in October and December and tabled for this meeting. And our first one is a modification. Case number MOD twenty-two dash zero 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 two. And this proposal was to modify the conditions of zoning from MOD eleven zero 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 one three eight. And they're asked to do this by substituting the site plan that was presented in the condition number two A, which references the preliminary site plan associated with the proposed operation of a landscape business at the time, and to remove condition number three D, which limits the hours of operation from seven AM through ten PM, and also condition number three E, which requires the maintenance of a seventy-five-foot tree line along Shepherd Road. The existing zoning is general commercial. It's in a Salem overlaid tier two. It's located at twenty-four eighty-six Highway eighty-one. And parcel size is two-point-six-three acres. And just a brief history, on ten eighteen, it was heard before this board and tabled for sixty days to allow the applicant to gather information from the community. And on December sixth, applicant requested that it be tabled until this meeting, so he can further get more information as well. So the applicant's intent, as I said, is to request a modification for those three conditions, number two A, three D, and three E, as read previously. And just a brief history, on September twentieth, twenty-eleven, the board initially approved REZ eleven zero 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 one zero zero and the flume to go with it, FLU eleven zero 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 one oh one, to allow this particular parcel to be rezoned to R three, single-family residential and general commercial to allow the lands, from, sorry, from R three to CG, to allow for landscaping business. And then it was modified on December twenty, twenty-eleven, where the amended condition three F is follows. And this was the initial petition. These are the uses that the applicant at the time agreed to restrict from the property. And this is also included in your packets. This is, I continued. So I won't go through. This is just outline. So the condition that was amended, three F, where they took out what was there and replaced it with no commercial vehicles, with the exception that as long as the property has a valid business license to operate as a landscape business, no commercial vehicles other than two tractor trailers without cabs, they remain on-site overnight. And I'm not gonna read through the entire thing. It is in your packets, commissioners, unless there's any questions. So that condition was amended back then. So the existing conditions today that are to be modified would be condition number two, which is substituting the side plan that was originally done. And then conditions number three D and E that applicant is requesting be removed. And these are the conditions currently on your screen and they're also included in your packet. Um, conclusion, should the Board of Commissioners recommend approval of the modification to modify condition number two A and remove conditions three D and three E? Of the twenty-eleven modification petition, staff recommends the following conditions be applied to the property. And should the modification be approved by the Board of Commissioners? It should be approved conditional, subject to owner's agreement to the following enumerated conditions. Where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the Board of Commissioners. One, the owner's agreement to abide by the following development standards and regulations. A, to maintain a landscape strip as approved by the county along Shepherd Road. B, the hours of operation will be from six AM to twelve midnight, seven days per week. And C, all other conditions of the modified December twenty-eleven, December twenty, twenty-eleven petition, as approved by the Board of Commissioners, shall still apply. So this is the location of the property, um, you have a corner of highway one sixty-two and eighty-one. Current zoning, general commercial, and this is the parcel up here. Tier two overlay Salem in Salem. Yellow River Watershed. And this is the survey of the parcel as provided by the applicant. And of course, this is the concept plan where they're showing. So you have, it's a convenience center with pumps as well as three suites for all the commercial businesses, which is over on the side here. And if there are any questions, the, um, applicant is here and he has informed that he didn't meet with the community. So if the board has any questions for him, he is available.
Okay. Now, we did, um, have a public hearing already on this, right?
At the last meeting, we did.
We did, okay, all right. Uh, Commissioner Henderson, you have any questions?
Uh, thank you, Mr. C. Well, uh, this particular zone is, is in, in District Four. And the question that I have is, is, I have one for staff, is if we didn't approve it, could a service station still be built on this parcel of property?
Yes, sir. Um, they're asking for the modification because the current design that they're proposing requires additional, um, space to go down. But if they, if this modification were denied, they could substitute, um, another design for a service station. It is an allowed use.
Okay. So, uh, and hit, hit me a little bit because I just really wanted to kind of understand this particular zoning. It is for them to add on, um, adjourn another, another little business and some more space for other businesses to be also in that particular area. What's to add on, uh, than the service station?
You're asking if they're adding on?
Yes, ma'am.
Currently, the land is not being, the parcel is not being used. So they would be constructing new buildings here. Yes, it would be a separate business, yes, sir.
Okay. Um, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Applewhite. Uh, one, one of the things that, um, I think we had discussed, I think was a Zoom meeting that was held on, uh, when was it last?
Uh, Thursday.
It's Thursday. And I was kind of unable to attend that particular meeting. And, uh, it's my understanding there was about seven people on the Zoom meeting. And what concerned me about that particular meeting was, was there enough advertising for the citizen District Four, District Three, uh, District Two to come out and just kind of just really just tell us what they wanted us to know about this particular zoning? Me personally being also, me being, um, kind of knowing that particular area pretty good, there's not a whole lot of people that would be beside it, it's more or less behind it. And typically what I do is, is as District Commissioner, is I try to make contact with those people, which I hadn't. And so I don't know whether this is appropriate time or not. Is there any way that the board would allow us to table for another thirty days? Go about, go back and I pick a, a particular place for, to give the opportunity for anyone in District Two or Three to come in, either in person. I like person, I like to see folk face to face. And, uh, and I've had my little concerns about Zoom, especially since we were doing Zooms a while back. It was so much negative and that still came up. And I said it came up with this one because I wasn't a part of it. But to give the people an opportunity just to come up and say what they need to say and tell me personally and then come back and make a decision.
Could I, you can make, you make it out in the form of a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I like to make a motion that we table it for additional thirty days to give us time to advertise a place. Now, I would like Nelson Heights, but if anywhere closer, either, either a commission want to have a little bit closer, please do so and let me know other than that, we have a Nelson Heights and invite everybody to come down.
Is there a sec, is there a second? It's motion by, um, Commissioner Henderson that we table this for thirty days. And second by Commissioner Sanders, in a discussion, all in favor. Any opposed? Thank you. It's stand table, four one. Thank you. Ms. Applewhite.
Thank you Chairman. Our second petition this evening is also all business. It is a rezoning case number REZ twenty-two dash zero 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 one four, located at seventy seventy-nine highway two twelve and highway twenty. It is on three point zero nine six acres approximately and it's actually two tracts. Tax parcel numbers are one dash seven and one dash seven eight. The existing land use map is mixed use. Currently zoned R two, single family residential. Proposed zoning would be general commercial. It's located in the South River Watershed, Commissioner District Two. Current owners, we have William Stewart Hull and Suzie Kate Underwood, care of Ann Hullhead. And petitioner is Gisele DeGaulle. And applicant's intent is to rezon the three point zero nine acres to general commercial. And we do have the subject site information as stated previously. With the zoning of R two, three point zero nine six acres and located in the vicinity of general and neighborhood and highway commercials, well as office institutional zoning. Conclusion, given the fact that the property is in proximity to commercial zonings and applicant's proposed uses of the land, staffs of the opinion that a rezoning may be appropriate for the site. Uh, this was tabled at the, two meetings ago, I think, October meeting, so that the applicant could do a traffic study. They have done a traffic memorandum which was submitted to GDOT, which they have reviewed. And one of the things that they did say is that at the time that it gets to the LDP stage, should this rezoning be approved, they would have to do a detailed full-blown traffic study. But this traffic memorandum provides initial information, which, which I was providing to the board. And the applicant is also present to go further into detail and answer any other questions that you may have. So the, what they're saying is that it will increase, in the peak hours, the traffic will be increased by about two point three percent of the total daily trips, um, compared to what is there now. And we do have the details, I have a summary, the executive summary on screen and the entire traffic memorandum is in, uh, your packets. If there are any questions? Recommended conditions, should this petition be approved by the Board of Commissioners? It should be approved general commercial conditional, subject to the owner's agreement to the following enumerated conditions. Where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, the conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the Board of Commissioners. And one, to the owner's agreement to abide by the following, A, a minor plat must be approved by the Department of Development Services to combine the two lots. B, a seventy-five foot buffer must be maintained along the western boundary line that is adjacent to R two zoning. And C, any required permits must be obtained from Development Services before any construction or development on the property. And D, permits must be obtained from all external agencies, which will include GDOT, Newton County Water and Sewer Authority and GSWCC. And this is the location of the parcel. It's actually two parcels as the survey will show. And here we have the current zoning, it's R two zoning, single family residential. The future land use map is mixed use, which allows for commercial development. South River is Watershed. And this is the survey that applicant is proposing. You can see the two lots as described in the legal description that is filed with the clerk of courts. And of course, this is a concept layout of what they are proposing. Oh, and if there are any questions?
Now, we did open this, this one up for a public hearing as well, is that correct?
It was, um, open for a public hearing previously, Commissioner.
Okay.
So it's the board's discretion.
Thank you, um.
I'm sorry Chairman. I meant Chairman.
No problem. Um, Commissioner Henderson, I mean Commissioner Mason, I'm sorry, uh, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I don't actually have any questions. Um, and so I'd like to actually make a motion that we approve REZ two-two dash zero 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 one four.
It's a motion by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner. Edwards. Sir, we, we have, we already had our public hearing on it. Um, and it's, we, we are convenient now, uh, from that public hearing. Yeah, so we already have had our public hearing. All right, thank you, sir. Um, again, it was motion by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? I, I do have a couple, I got a couple of questions. So this property is, this is, I want to make sure I'm correct. This is the property, um, adjacent to two twelve and Georgia twenty, right?
Correct, it, it's bordered by those two roads.
By the Kroger.
Uh, oh, it's not, okay. So the Kroger shopping center is here. So this is two twelve going up here and then we have twenty down here and this is two twelve across that way.
Okay.
Just kind of quirky, but yeah.
Okay. And, and.
Yeah, Broad Bridge Road, yeah.
So can you tell me about the traffic study again?
So the summary that, let me go back this way. Right, this is, uh, the summary that was provided, the full details of the memorandum is in your packets. Um, but basically, so they're saying that the average daily traffic, according to the twenty twenty-one study, they've compared that with the data that they found now. Right, we're about two thousand and twenty-one vehicles in the morning peak hours and twenty-three six-vehicle in the afternoon peak hours. And according to the, what applicant has researched in his, um, the post-development is projected to generate sixty-six new entry vehicles in the morning. So that will be added to the twenty twenty-one number from twenty twenty-one. And forty-three new vehicles in the afternoon peak hours. And the overall percentage increase, um, in daily trips, their proposal will be, estimated will be a two point three percent increase from what it is currently.
Okay. All right, thank you. Um, any more discussion? Um, Commissioner Cowan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I might need to get, um, attorney involved in this. One of the things I've got a concern about, excuse me, I can't talk very well tonight. One of these things I have a concern about is people get the zoning done, they never, they never build what they said they were going to build, they flip the property to another person. They got the zoning, they increase the value and they flip it to somebody else and they come in with something totally different. Because once you give them commercial zoning, they pretty much do anything they want to, right?
That is allowed in that zoning, yes, sir.
Right. Now, I talked to Patrick and he said we could start putting conditions on stuff like that. Damon, this is your district, I don't know how you feel about that, but I'm concerned about people flipping property and you getting something out there, you get a tire sales place instead of a nice restaurant. They promised you a nice restaurant, but no, you got, you know, stacked up tires. And it's a commercial development. So that's my concern, is way people are, I feel like they're using us to increase their value of property and have no intent, I mean, it's all good and everything saying, oh, we're going to build this, but they don't build that, they put the for sale sign on it and get out. It's my concern. I've just, uh, I think we ought to find a way to put conditions on properties, uh, for the zoning issues. Um, that's just how I feel about it.
Thank you, Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Commissioner Cowan, I can tell you that this property has basically sat for a very, very long time. Um, at least as long as I've actually lived in Newton County, um, it's just kind of been there. Um, I do know, and I guess Shayna, you can correct me if I'm incorrect, uh, once it is, uh, changed over to commercial, uh, then at that particular point, there has to be a plat, there has to be a diagram that's actually submitted to, uh, stating exactly what it's going to be like. It goes to the planning committee and then does it come back to us for a finalization on that particular project? Or is it just done once we actually change it over to commercial?
So once it's rezoned to commercial, um, in order for them to begin development, the applicant would have to submit their land disturbance plans to our department, where it's reviewed at that time. So, so it won't necessarily come back before this board for this particular use that they're asking.
So a point of clarification, I, that's, I think he asked something completely different.
Right.
Uh, so he asking if he approved this zoning, this commercial zoning, the applicant has the opportunity to operate whatever that is allowed in that commercial zoning. Is that correct?
That is a possibility, but, um, however, in the ordinance is why we had them, let us know that they're doing a restaurant and retail establishment. It does say that at this particular hearing, they do need to present to the board, you know, what their intentions are and what business it is that they're trying to put there. So that's why we, um, that's why they've stated it's an app, it's a restaurant and retail business.
So attorney want to, she want to chime in?
And so just to clarify, um, once this is rezoned to CG, general commercial, any of the uses are allowed unless you make it a conditional zoning. But yes, it does have to go through the process with Ms. Applewhite, but just to, if you just want a yes or no, black and white, then yes, it is, anything that's allowed under CG.
So are we able to put a condition at this particular point?
Um, yeah. You can, you want it. You can, right?
I would advise if we want to do a conditional zoning, that we re-advertise it as a, a zoning with conditions. Would be my recommendation.
So before we make a decision, we have to re-advertise with the condition?
Yes. Or at least with staff recommendations, so that there's a proper public hearing on it.
Uh, I got Commissioner Edwards and then Commissioner Cowan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so Ms. Applewhite, the, the conditions that we just, we just saw, those go with the new owner, whoever buys the property gets those conditions.
Yes, sir.
They migrate with the new owner, correct?
Yes, this, these conditions do go with the property.
These are forever.
Yes, unless they come for a modification.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Cowan.
The reason I say this, it wasn't, uh, I think it was in November or whenever, property out there off of two twelve somewhere, uh, we rezoned it. They said, oh, we're going to build a grand restaurant, da, da, da. And I went by there and there's a for sale sign up the next day. And, uh, it could be anything, it could be any use. If we don't put, start putting conditions on here, people are going to be using this Board of Commissioners to, no disrespect to developers, because I've done development before, but they're going to be, they're using the Board of Commissioners to accelerate their, and increase their property value. Because now they can say, hey, I got commercial land for sale and there's no conditions on it. So it's up to you, Damon, it's, uh, your district.
He can, he can, um, he can rescind his motion and ask to, yeah, amend his motion, yeah.
Thank you, so I would like to, because I want to, and I think Commissioner Cowan brought up a very valid point. And we do want to make sure that as we are developing our community, that we're making sure that we are sticking with what we are, the initial or original intent. So I would like to go ahead and amend that motion to table it for another 30 days, where we can go back and put those conditions in place so that it can come back before this board with those intended conditions.
30 days?
Yes, 30 days.
Can I get a second, please? Yeah. You second, thank you. It's been motioned by Commissioner Mason that we table this for 30 days. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Stand table. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chairman.
I'm going to bring now, we're going to bring back Pastor Lett up, please. Ma'am, if you would, please come on back up for a quick second. Who had a question? Commissioner Henderson. Commissioner Henderson had a question.
Can you go to answer the question? Thank you, thank you, Mr. Sam. A relevant question that I have is, is that in the gym, we have, we have men and women both in the gym area, I guess. As far as the warming shelter, am I, so, so how do you divide the, the women from the guys, all the women's and children from the guys? I mean, how, how does that work?
At which location?
At the gym.
At the gym.
Yes, ma'am.
There is a separation there. And outside, chef deputy being there. We do have two people that works there. They're there all night, it's covered all night from 5:00 until 7:00 the next morning.
Yes, ma'am. There was just, there was just one concern I have, because I, you know, I always have like for the, ladies be on one side and childrens and maybe the guys, if in a way possible, if we can suggest a facility where you could just literally put a wall between them and put the girls and the women's and children on one side and guys on the other side. Also, we know that sometime that the gym is being used by recreation. And so how, how do, how do we, how does that count? I mean, how would, kind of, do we take the people in the warming shelter and ask them to go up in the stands while they play basketball? Just trying to have an idea.
Okay, I can answer that.
Yes, ma'am.
On the, when the people are there in the evening, because there was a problem. And with, I guess with the games, we didn't know, we wasn't told that that was going to be in the games. And so no one expected that. So once we learned that, what we did was, we moved the carts from off the floor and put them back, and I think this is the era where mostly sports gear is.
Yes, ma'am.
And in the mornings, they placed them back in there because of the games in the evening.
Yes, ma'am.
And where we was going at 5:00, now when we serve their meals at 5:30, they have to stay there to shelter to about 7:00.
Yes, ma'am.
And then today, once we have the schedule, and most of the time, I guess the coaches let us know when days they're going to be off. And they get, they make contact with Ms. Banks and say, "Y'all can come over earlier," but most of the time, they don't leave the shelter till about 7:00 or 7:30 at night.
Yes, ma'am. Well, I was just, there was kind of a concern, it was kind of mentioned to me. And it was one that I wanted the opportunity to kind of talk to you, just know a little more about it. And lastly, I just want to just thank you for your service, because I can remember years ago, when you started on this journey with the late Dr. Dawes, and how far we have came and then the late Sam Ramsey, and how good they worked towards helping people who really were in need. And even though they gone on to heaven, you're still in here working on and on. And we appreciate you, thank you for your service. Thank you.
This, this community, as I speak to all the commissioners, have been a serious blessing to the homeless population in Newton County. It is growing, and it's growing rapidly. You heard those numbers. But also, they, they, those that are in locations, that are on people's property, well, that is being sort of worked through by the city. So we're going to see more visible homeless, because they was like in the woods with their tents. So that is not bad now. And so we're going to see more homeless, we're going to see more on the square. We're going to see more showing up in areas that we care for them not to. So it should be, I believe it should be a discussion. What are we going to do? And it's not going to go away. If you know anything about the scripture, it said, "The poor will be with you always." So we, that mean we all have work to do, and we'll always have work to do, and taking care of those that are homeless and in our communities.
Yes, ma'am. And as you said, this one last little note, Mr. Chairman. If we all continue to trust in God and follow people who love the homeless people, who want to help them, and let's go out and provide a decent place for them to be while we can. Thank you.
We must have a discussion.
Commissioner Sanders.
Thank you so much for your service to the community dealing with our unsheltered population. I was looking at these numbers, and my concern is more so not what you're doing, but the county in the whole. When I was in Ohio, the commissioners had apartments set for the homeless. So I don't know if that should be applied for us here in Newton County to where we have additional facilities, because I see, looking at these numbers, that the population of the unsheltered here in Newton County is growing. And so we may have to look at how we're going to move forward. I know we're doing our comprehensive plan right now, and how we can move forward to providing facilities with the county that can house some of our unsheltered and have programs to get them back acclimated with society.
And the saddest thing is when we see our, we see women's and children. And it, it just does something to your heart when you see a woman sleeping in a car with their children. We see it all the time, right here in this county. You don't have to drive to Atlanta to see it. It's right here. And it's more visible now than ever been.
Thank you. Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Pastor Lett. You know I have a heart for this area of work within our community. As a matter of fact, when I realized that the population was growing, back in 2021, I started an Unsheltered Job and Housing Initiative, working with you, working with Georgia P. My Technical College, getting some of those unsheltered individuals transported over to GPTC, getting them trained in a five-week or a 15-week program. Once they graduate from that program, they're automatically placed on an actual job here in Newton County, making $16 to $28 an hour. And then, of course, working with our housing authority to ensure that we can find locations for them to get into housing that they can actually afford, so that they can be re-acclimated back into the community. And so, starting in 2023, I'm going to really be pushing to take that initiative that I began to a whole nother level so that we can really get those individuals acclimated. Now, the issue that we are running into, of course, is housing. And so I'm now working on finding those funds where we can begin to create and establish the housing that we need for these individuals, so that we can get them back into homes, and they can begin to feel good about who they are. Also, working with Viewpoint Health, I've come to the realization that some of these individuals are in these situations because of some mental and substance abuse issues. And so we want to definitely address those concerns as well, because we don't want them to get through this program, and then they relapse because we never addressed the foundational issue. And so definitely, that's something I want to continue to work with you. So this warming shelter was great. Thank you for the work that you do within our community, and I'm looking forward to continuing to work with you to help address this major concern that's growing within our community.
Thank you. Only mental health. Majority of what we see are dealing with mental illness. I remember when this board approved, what, a couple of years ago, that we would have a person from mental health that came in once a week. It helped, it was a great beneficiary to us, and to, especially to that person, because they did things like paintings. They got them involved, and they encouraged them to go to their appointments and things like that. And what we see now, and these are not older people, these are young folks, but they cannot function because they have an illness. They have an illness. We partnered with Viewpoint Mental Health, but we would love for you to have a conversation to bring back a counselor to that facility, to be a help to them, help to them.
Yeah, of course. You know, um, let me just jump in here right now, because I know we got, we got to move on.
Okay.
But I had an opportunity to publicly thank this board at the last commissioner meeting we had last week, Mr. Sims and the City of Covington, and the City Council from the City of Covington and the mayor. And now I want to take this opportunity to thank you and your staff for all that you have done in these dangerous times. Because when you're talking about those type of temperatures, you're talking about the, the loss of life, the possible loss of life. So thank you so much. We look forward to continuing to partner with you and, you know, keep being that soldier out there fighting on the battlefield. We greatly appreciate you.
Thank you. On that night, when it was so cold, it was hard for me to sleep, knowing there were still others out there. I would call the 911 center, and I would ask them to send a deputy to air reviews that I know where people sleep. And that was an individual female that slept on the church stair. And I would call, "Go check on her." Just, just go see, is she okay? Because her state of mind of mental health would not allow her to go into any facility. So I would ask them, "Just go check on her." There was a couple of people that I had concerns for that night. Thank you so much for all that you do for this community, commissioners.
Thank you. Mr. Sims.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If we could have our finance department come up under the leadership of Director White.
Guys, we're going to ask you why the finance department is coming. We're going to ask if you would, please, ma'am, please, sir, put your cell phones on silent. If you don't know how to do it, ask someone close to you, let them help you do it. I don't want to have to keep, we don't want to have to keep doing it tonight. Go ahead, sir.
So I would like to just take this time to recognize our finance department, again, under the leadership of Director White. We received a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting, GFOA award. This is a high award that's given to finance departments for understanding the importance of good stories, financial stories with public funding, and doing a great job with it. And I would just like to recognize our team, our finance team here, for just doing a great job. Last week, we brought it up, but we thought it would be best to bring them back before you all tonight to give them their due under our leadership of our great director, Director White. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, thank you, sir. Thank you, Brittany, to you and your team. We greatly appreciate all the long hours that you put in, you guys. We know it's hard, but we're so thankful that we got you on board to keep us in line. So thank you so much. Mr. Sims.
We, that concludes it. That concludes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda, I'm showing number eight, unfinished business. The presenter will be Chief Michael Connor of our Fire Services.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Board.
Good evening.
This is just a formality, Ms. Randy from the Great Finance Department that we just acknowledged. She said that the trucks the board approved to purchase on the 10th, because of the cost, had to be spread out over two different board meetings.
That's correct.
And this is just bringing back what was approved on the January 10th budget to replace some of our fleet vehicles.
Thank you so much. I don't think we need another vote, it's already been voted on. But it did need to come back before the board again. So thank you so much.
Yes, sir. Thank y'all.
Mr. Chairman, the next item that we have on the agenda is number nine. Our consent agenda, we've already done nine C, but nine A and nine B, please.
Commissioners, I seek a motion that we approve of consent agenda. It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes 5-0.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, the next item we have on the agenda is number 10. We have the presenter is Mr. Greg Mann, our IT Services Director. It's for Information Services requesting approval of AT&amp;T Internet feed bandwidth upgrade. Cost $1,562 monthly. The funding source is going to be fiscal year '23 Information Services budget, and yes, it's budgeted.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Seeking approval for an agreement with AT&amp;T, who currently provides our internet bandwidth, increasing from 250 megabits per second up and downstream to 1,000 megabits up and downstream for $160 per month, less than what we are paying now. We are be, we would essentially be quadrupling our internet bandwidth and saving $3,800 over the length of the 24-month term.
Thank you, sir. Guys, I seek a motion, please. It's motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the next item we have is item number 11. Our presenter is Ms. Shayna Applewhite, the interim Director of Development Services. They're requesting, purchasing is requesting approval of contract for CPL Architects for Development Services Consultant. Cost is not to exceed $130,000.
Director.
Thank you, Chairman. This request is for the board to approve CPL Architects as one of the companies that will be assisting us in our plan reviews within the department. And as Ms. Hamstead is, not to exceed $130,000 at this time.
Thank you, ma'am. I seek a motion, commissioners.
I'd like a motion to approve CPL Architects.
Can I get a second, please? It's been motioned by Commissioner Cowan and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes 5-0. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chair, the next item is item number 12. We have, our presenter is Ms. Brittany White, the Finance Director. The supporting documentation is located in your rear pocket of the binder. It's for our Finance Department, December 2022 Financial Update.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Ms. Director.
Tonight I will be presenting the monthly financial report for December 2022. December is the sixth month of our fiscal year. December is the sixth month of our fiscal year, so that puts us halfway, 50% through our fiscal year. So I will start with the general fund revenues. To date, our general fund revenues are at 40.1 million. So that puts us right at 47.96% of our projected revenues for the year, so we're right on target. And these are just two graphs that show the revenues per month. So you can see we do tend to get revenue heavy in October, November, December. And then January will also be another revenue-heavy month because that's when our property taxes start rolling in. And the graph down below just shows budget to actual to date. And for our general fund expenditures, to date, we are at 40.4 million, which is 47.88. So we're also right on track with that 50% margin with our expenditures as well. And this shows the expenditures per month, so they're more evenly spread across than the revenues are. And then the graph below shows our actuals to budget. And for the total, right now, our revenues are under $270,000. So we are right at, our revenues and our expenditures are pretty much spot on even with each other right now at this point in the year. For our three enterprise funds, our water fund, to date, their revenue is 5 million. Their expenses to date are 3.4 million. For our solid waste fund, their revenue to date is around 4 million and their expenses to date are 2.9 million. And then for the gate there's a factory sholes fund, their revenue to date is 182,000 and their expenses to date are 106,000. We currently still have two active SPOLOs since we haven't started collecting on 2023 quite yet. So our remaining balance in the 2011 SPOLOs is 1,26,000. And there's one remaining project in that, which is the historic jail. Our current remaining budget for the 2017 SPOLOs is 38.3 million, I think is what that says. That's really small. And then our collections to date is 86.3 million. So our collections are actually 27.8 million over what our original projection was at this point in collections. And we'll collect on the 2017 SPOLOs up and through June, and then we'll start with the 2023 SPOLOs. And then in our impact fee fund, we currently have a fund balance there of 4.7 million. So that wraps up my presentation and I'll take any questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Sims?
Quick question, it may be for the county manager and you also, Ms. White. What is the plan for the impact fees for 2023? Because a lot of building is being built on the west side. So what is the plans for the funding? As far as recreation and building up and providing the needs of the community?
Yeah, we're actually currently, right now, they have, Shayna's department has contracted with a consultant. We're reworking the impact fee. But these current buckets will stay what they are. Majority of the money here is in roads and the impact fee because they all have buckets. So in the bucket for roads is 3.4, which is the majority. The parks and wrecks is 976,000 is what they have in their bucket. And I know recreation has some going, ongoing projects that are working on the impact fee fund. And so they're kind of prioritizing according to the comprehensive plan and they're funding them from there.
But just to add to what the director stated, Commissioner, we are having currently a study being done on our impact fees. And it might yield some different things based on this study.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Commissioner Cowan.
Historic jail, is there a plan in place to get anything going on there?
I'll let somebody else answer that.
I'll do my very best attempt. So we are supposed to be following up with, actually, the chairman regarding that matter. We're supposed to be having some further discussions about that. One of the things that when I got here, we recognized that we were having our voters vote for SPOLOs 23. We had an outstanding project on SPOLOs 11. And we still had a few outstanding projects on 17. So we recognize that we need to kind of go ahead and close up these outstanding projects on our existing SPOLOs to go ahead and move forward and focus on 2023 SPOLOs. And that's what we plan on doing.
So I was told that 4H.
I want to ask you a question.
Okay. So.
So when are you going to have somebody over there doing some work?
For historic?
Yes.
What the chairman stated, I did receive a call regarding a interest from 4H about potentially being at that site location. We're supposed to bring some ideas back before this board on some potential opportunities for that location.
Okay. Let's see if I got this right. Okay, the outside's been renovated, the inside needs to be renovated. Who is the contractor and when are they going to start on that? I don't care about who we lease it to or what our uses are. What I'm interested in getting the building function. So what's the timeline? Where are we at?
If we can follow back up with you on that one, sir. Your question, if I can follow back up with you on that one, to give you a more definite response.
Okay. Commissioner Sanders. No, I'm not you. I'm sorry. I apologize. Commissioner, I forgot. I'm sorry. Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sims. Well, my question is, is get this plantation real farms? And it seems to me that there's somewhat new account. So how do we know what money is being spent, who's leasing it, and what is being leased for? And I talked to some of my colleagues throughout the state of Georgia. And my understanding is, you may correct me if I'm wrong, because I always like to be corrected, especially with something like this, is that we the only county, out of 159 counties, that have a functional plantation that takes in over, was it right, over $300,000?
That's a functional plantation.
A year. Is it 300,000, Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry.
Takes in about $300,000 a year that, what exactly do, what is we, I mean, what is the money paying for? I'm still behooved on that one. And I know that the nonprofits, most of them, just like you should get about 32,000. You know, they put in the payworts at 40,000, you have about 3,300, 3,330 and 33 cents a month. We still haven't received anything for about nine months. So what are we doing over there that is, that is so important that we take our tax payers' dollars and spend it over there? Are we going around to the plantation homes over there and looking at them and shooting a move or something about it, you know? I had hoped in my years that we had as a community, as a county, and I love this county, this is my own, that we got past that and stopped spending our taxpayer dollars on plantation. So, you know, there's got to be some kind of accountability there by somebody. I mean, that's why we're up here. And so I'm asking for that accountability for the taxpayers' dollars and cents. So interim county manager Sims, if you would be so kind, and I think I may have answered this before, but maybe, Ms. Jacob, you can make a note. Could you bring me a document that just kind of tell me how is money being spent over there? And what is being spent on? Because I think a hundred and some thousand dollars of plantation that basically nobody I know is getting any kind of use off of. In fact, the people that I know around town scared to go over there. But let me know how it's being spent. And if you, if you could make a note and tell me what advantages of what the need is or how does it help the peoples of Newton County. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 13, please.
Okay, the next item is the FY 2024 Budget Calendar. I'm going to have Brian pull that up on the screen. So it's already budget time. I started preparing for budget last week. So the first thing usually for budget is the creation of the calendar, so I'm seeking approval on the calendar. There's a lot of different dates on here, but the key dates for the Board of Commissioners that you would need to be involved in would be, let's see, really starting in March. March 28th, 29th, and 30th would be when we would hold our usual budget workshop dates. Then April 18th, we would have a BOC work session that would kind of follow the conversations that we had from the budget workshops and kind of get a feel for where the board is wanting to head with the budget. Then we would also hold a citizens' budget workshop that same evening. Then the plan would be to start presenting the budget on May 16th. Then we would have to hold two public hearings. The first public hearing would be on May 23rd. And then the second one would be May 30th with also the adoption of the FY 24 budget. This is also tentative, dates can change, but this would be the initial calendar.
You make a motion? Can I get a motion? Mr. Sims.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also just wanted to include that last time, some of the feedback that we received from this board was the engagement from the community. So what we would also like to do is have some citizens' engagement, budget, citizen engagement on both sides of our county, if possible, the western side of our county, the eastern side of our county, just added involvement from our citizens so they can have the input as it relates to our budget.
Thank you. Can I get a motion, please? It's a motion by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? Commissioner Sanders.
Mine is more so a comment and maybe someone could probably give me the information. I was speaking to some previous commissioners and they told me that they used to sit down and do the budget. Is there a reason why commissioners not involved in the budget now? In the process of assisting with the budget? Because I was shocked to even hear that. They used to sit down and the previous commissioners before I came on board, you sit down and do the budget. Is there a reason why commissioners are not involved in this process?
Those same commissioners changed the form.
Former government.
Yeah, so it's in the, in our. No, it says the chairman and the county manager and the finance director present a budget.
Correct.
Present a budget to the commissioners, to the board.
I'm sorry, I'm talking off the mic. It says present, but it doesn't say that the commissioners cannot be involved in the process.
It don't say they can either.
Yeah, but.
But it does specify that the chairman, the finance director, and the county manager.
Okay, because my concern is we're voting on a budget that's put before us and we should be involved in something that we vote on, just like some of the other things. And even this board can change the form of government again if they wanted to with a super majority vote. So that's my only concern is that we're voting on stuff that's presented to us and we're not involved in the initial process. And I completely agree with you what it says, but it does say we cannot be involved in that process.
So it don't specify that, until it specified that it does, that the commissioners does, then, then we can do that, but it don't, it doesn't say that you do. It does specify that the chairman, the county manager, and the finance director. So Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm looking at the budget calendar. Where we have the, if I could scroll up just a little bit, Brian.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It's too big. He got the floor. Go ahead, sir.
Right where it says March 28th, March 29th, and March 30th, where we will actually have those budget workshops from nine to five and then nine to 12. So the budget that is presented to the Board of Commissioners, are we able to actually make recommendations for changes to the budget during that budget workshop so that we can actually participate in the actual editing or changes or recommendations to the actual budget that's presented to us?
That's correct.
So at that time, during the budget workshop, the Board of Commissioners can actually make recommendations or changes at that time?
That's correct.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I just have one more statement in regards to that. The only issue that I have with that, when I also asked, could we go line by line to go over things? We don't do that here. We just, we don't go through it line by line so it can be actually talked about each individual item. So that's the issue in regards to that budget.
So when we do those workshops, commissioners have the opportunity to ask any questions they want to. When they go through, when they take, they get their packet and go over it. At home, they got the opportunity to write down any questions they want to ask and bring it before the entire board. I got Mr. Sims and then I got you, Commissioner Edwards.
The only thing I can add is that some communities, and this is something for consideration before this board, we could have before the Board of Commissioners a survey of priorities to make sure that the budget reflect you all's priority. So if public safety, if leisure, if our infrastructure, if these are the priorities, then the budget will reflect you all's overall majority priorities. And we could have a brief survey for you all, you know, ranking of the top three or four priorities based on this board. And then our budget would reflect that.
Thank you. Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brittany, can we, you know, I'm not able to attend every minute of every budget session, so it's during the week. But is there any way we can have an initial spreadsheet? And then anytime there's a meeting adjourned or you and the chairman and the county manager get together and we, and the department heads for that matter, and make a change, then we can create a new tab, just say, copy and move to the end, you know what I mean, in the spreadsheet? And reflect those changes so that we've got, every time we make a change, we've got a new tab.
So.
Especially as it relates to the meetings in here.
Our software system does something similar to that. So what it does is we have five levels set up in our software system. So it starts at the department head level and then it moves to like the finance level. So I usually make the first initial changes. So if I see a department put in that their, one of their contracts is for $500 a month, but I know it's $200 a month, then I make those small changes to not burden, you know, burden the board to do that. And then it usually moves to a county manager level. And then it moves to a pleniminary, good, you know what I'm saying, and then a final. So it's able to do that, but it may not be as detailed as you're wanting it to be.
I don't need a, every department line item. I just need to see the department's total budget and how it changed from one meeting to the next.
Yeah, we could definitely do that.
And it doesn't have to be every single day, but at least every meeting we have. You know, when the changes are made, some, you guys make changes, you know, between meetings.
Yeah.
Or proposals between meetings. I'd like to see those proposed changes in a spreadsheet if possible.
Yeah, and I usually do something like that. I have an ongoing spreadsheet that I usually have tabs on that have dates on them and then I make notes beside them on what we've done. So, yeah, we could definitely do that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any more discussions? All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you.
Chairman, the next item is number 14, and that's also Ms. Brittany White as well as Mr. Sims.
Mr. Sims, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this particular agenda item is providing a update on our 2023 SPOLOs. We have listed our tier one as well as our tier two projects. We also have our project manager, Mr. Jeff Prime here. Based on the approval of the SPOLOs, we had identified projects that we thought would be the tier one, tier two projects as well as our bonded projects. And if we can show you all that particular slide. The purpose of having this agenda before you all, we want to provide full transparency as well as have you all involved with our SPOLOs 2023. The previous conversations with the previous SPOLOs, we think that the feedback that we've received is that if we have a plan in place that you all can see how we're moving towards the projects, how we plan on implementing the projects, it would allow our citizens to know what's happening. to know what's happening with our particular projects. So that's the reason why we have this, uh, agenda before you all.
It's the one where it says tier one and tier two. Um, Commissioner Sanders.
Can, can you go back to the chart if you don't mind? So the lines are, what are they symbolizing, uh, that you've worked on it? I know shaded area normally means something, so I just want to know what the shaded area is.
So we have our project manager. This is a, a proposed project schedule, and we'll have him talk about this, as well as the tier one projects. I think it's important for us to discuss what are the tier one projects, what are the tier two projects, and we're gonna have that presentation before you all shortly.
So to answer your question, so this, this is basically a schedule. So what we're, what we're talking about is each of those shaded area, um, represents one month.
Okay.
Um, and so it's a task. So if you were to look at like, for instance, countywide park improvements, the first task would be to put out an R F P for a design builder, um, and that would take us from, we, if we were approved, we would start in February and have it awarded, uh, at the April meeting, and then we would start the project design and pre-construction phase for those next few months, and then we'd go out for construction on those projects. So what we've done is for each of the projects that are proposed in tier one, we've put together this detailed schedule. Um, if we're looking at the next one in line, it's the senior services enrichment center. Once again, we would do a, uh, R F P for a design builder, and then in this particular case, we would have to go through a property identification and assessment phase, that project, to identify where on the west side of the, of this, of the county it would go. Once we had completed that, then we'd go into the design and then construction. Um, our goal would have that project completed, um, in the third quarter of twenty-five. Let me keep going. You want to do this?
Yes, so on the board now that we have before you all are our, the tier one projects as well as the bonded projects, and Director White, we can go over those particular projects.
So in the first, um, the very last column, we'll start with the very right-hand column, would be the bonded projects. Um, we could, we're, I'm just now getting in conversations with the bond council, so the bond process usually takes around forty-five to sixty days. You are allowed to start bonding projects technically before you start collections, cause our first collection will not probably roll in until August because the state will collect in July and then they'll disperse us August. So the bonded projects, um, in this, on this spreadsheet are general government fleet replacement, half of the public safety fleet replacement, which would be the sheriff's portion, um, the fire portion would be the fire trucks that Chief Connor has put on the agenda, and those have a three-year build time, so we, there would really not be a need to bond those projects. Um, let's see, three point five for countywide park improvements, four million for the senior services enrichments, enrichment center, um, three million for the west side community park, two million for the south side park, and then five million for the community water park. So those would be projects we could, um, kick off right off the bat. Then the tier two projects, which would, we could fund with cash, once the cash starts rolling in, um, will receive roughly probably one point five to one point eight million per month on collections. So we had started, um, sto, talking about funding the lower projects, so that would, like the lower amount projects. So that would be the admin building for two point three, the centralized storage for one point nine, the animal services expansion for one million seventy-five, Nelson Heights improvements for a million, Newton Trails for a million, and then Washington Street for a million.
Brit, Brittany, can you, um, um, talk about how, about the collections and what kind of the time period it would take to, um, collect the funds to do those projects?
Um, so yeah, that would be a six to seven month collection time to fund those projects. So like I said, we would start collecting in August, and then the, so the period of those projects would take somewhere in probably the air, the area of six to seven months to complete, have enough cash to flow them.
Thank you. Mr. Sims?
And the only thing I would just wanted to add is that some of the feedback that we had when we were having the presentations on this particular S P L O S projects is that it takes a long time for our citizens to see the projects come into fruition, and we thought we would start off from the gate with letting people know what projects are gonna take off and they can see them. And we also have with our, uh, public information officer, Mr. Fazio, now we have brief, uh, mapping, we call story maps on all of our different S P L O S projects, so we can just show highlight the particular projects, our citizens can see what we're doing.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, guys? Uh, Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. A question I have is, as I looked on, uh, the projects, it was our cousin, uh, community center, and, uh, that was one of the projects that we, the commissioners, I think, we got together and we added it on, eight meetings on that one, and we were wanting it to be bonded. In fact, I think when we done, when we did it, we said, this is what we want to do. I think if I'm not correct me for wrong, I, I always say that, uh, Commissioner Cowan and I went over to the building and the heap of the building, we thought that just needed probably be painted up, cause it really looked good, uh, maybe with possible a little bit of wiring, since I had, uh, talked to, um, county manager, interim county manager Sims, and he, and, uh, he sent me an email back that, uh, uh, that it couldn't be used, especially cafeteria area, and I was thinking, I said, I can't even use all the rest of it, when we got so many folks out there. But the eight million dollars, and when we put it back on the S P L O S, we put it back on the S P L O S, and I think we said ten, but it ended up being eight, we put it back on the S P L O S, we also went so far and said, this is how we want it to kind of look, the eight million dollars that we put back on, if it was approved by the voters. And we talked a little bit about, um, we handed out flyers, the flyer, and said, this go with what we said we, we want over at cousin, and I think the last piece of it was by Commissioner Cowan, I hate to keep using his name, Commissioner Cowan was that, uh, we wanted to have a meeting, but this is what we want to do so far. So I documented and made sure that, and I requested it be a part of the minutes that I wanted, um, um, that, uh, Mr. Prime, who was gonna, uh, I guess restore that particular building, and all others, okay, so they'd be on the same page as for, for what we wanted for that particular building, the R L Cousins, uh, community center, and how we want it to be renovated, and a little stuff added on to it. And we want it to be bonded along with the other projects, cause this is one of the projects that we wanted to make sure that the citizens of Newton County, uh, knew that we had forgotten, and that there was a part of restoring that particular, uh, building to a certain degree in an underserved area of the community. And so I'm just, I guess it's a long, uh, kind of question, but where we at and could we bond it? So we start work on it whenever, soon as possible.
So Commissioner Henderson, that can be bonded, uh, bonded project if that's the will of the board. Uh, the projects that we also have identified, per you all's, uh, recommendation, are projects that we can get done. The eight million for the cousin project might not be enough for the entire project, so we would probably need, not probably, we would need additional funding for that particular project. The projects that we've identified, bonding projects, are projects that we can go ahead and get those projects completed, and the funding amount is exactly what would be, you know, the amount of the particular project. That was the rationale for those bonded projects. And if the team, if they want to add anything else, please.
Yeah, I, I just, I just wanted to say a little bit, and I, is, I personally thought that when we were talking and we, and I think we mentioned what was about the bonding, and you had said that it could be done, and for that particular building. And, um, and I thought there was the consensus of the board that time that it would be bonded along with the other projects that were gonna be bonded, be bonded and start it up on it. You said it cost more. We said then that it costed more than eight million dollars to do it. We yesterday, I think Mr. Prime said about twelve million, but you said eight, but we weren't talking about a three-story building. We were talking about, uh, renovating, a good portion of it painted, et cetera, make it looking, make it look good, and taking off that back part where the, uh, D M V is at, and, and possibly, if the money would allow us to do it, build a nice place for, um, for alumni, senior alumni association that wanted to be placed somewhere in that particular building. So, um, we were hoping that we could get with Mr. Prime, and we started mapping out what we could put there, rather than just putting some there with maybe we didn't originally intend for it to be there, I placed it back on the, uh, S P L O S ballot.
So, so the, the original master plan that we worked with R L Cousins for the entire campus was a sixteen million dollar project. Um, at one point, we tried to narrow it down to ten, we ended up with the eight being that you see today. So we know the, and, and they know that we would have to do some phasing of that project. And to your point, at the appropriate time when that project is underway, we would work with them to prioritize how we spend the funds. Um, one of the things we talked about was, you know, to the extent that we were to do the community building, we may have to do that in two phases instead of one. Uh, but that would be a prioritization that we would do with them, and they made it clear, uh, renovating the historic building was a high priority to them. So those are the kind of things that we would work with them on. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. I, I just, in la, in last thing, I didn't intend to have them debate on this, but it, we looked at what the project plans, Ryan and myself, and we looked at them, we looked at them, and we decided we didn't want all that.
That's right.
But we decided we want to go through the building, make it nice, do a very nice entrance, front entrance, paint it up, have, have a portion of it for incubator businesses, and, uh, the cafeteria was, was to be saved and stop ready at Costa if we were going to have to take out for, start, start ready at Costa and maybe build something new, but no three-story building, so that, so we looked at that and took that out. Three-story boards, all possible. So that's why we wanted to have a conversation, hopefully with you, Mr. Prime, in order to show you what we believe, where we believe it should look, and the, uh, renovations should be did over at our, uh, historic R L Cousins, which is a part of our community, has been there since I was alive. So that's kind of where we was at, and we, we couldn't do that unless we had you there.
That's fine. We can, we-
That was our-
I'll work with the county manager and we'll make sure we get that.
And we got the paperwork. We got the paperwork and what we suggested, and we passed out to all of the commissioners before then, and so there was scope work that we feel like we needed.
Okay. Yes, sir. Absolutely. Thank you, sir. Go ahead, Brittany.
Yeah, as, as finance, I just think it's important to say this, and I just, um, want to say it just so the boards are aware, we did, when we budgeted for the S P L O S, we had budgeted to initially bond around twenty-five million dollars. So the numbers that we built the S P L O S around, we're bonding that. Um, I mean, it's ob, obviously the boards will to bond whatever projects they want to, but we probably need to try to stay around that twenty-five million dollar mark because especially interest rates have gone much higher than they were when we started this process a year ago, um, so we're probably gonna be even looking at more interest, cause for instance, um, on the public safety fleet replacement, the original amount, um, was eight point four without interest, interest put it to nine point five, so you're looking at around one point, probably one point one million for an eight point four million dollar project in interest. So those numbers have been pre-built in, so anything over that, we would definitely have to start seeking funding sources.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Do we get a motion? Yes. Guys, we need a motion.
Motion?
For what?
Yeah. You're voting on this, um, um, you're voting on the, um, S P L O S project list?
Tier, tier, oh.
To what now? The three, yeah, the three tiers. The three tiers, yeah.
So? Second?
It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason.
Never, never question.
Any, any, any more discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Uh, the question is, would this include the bonding of R L Cousins?
No, it would include everything that's on this list.
I understand, but so how do we get to that point? Cause I'm trying to make sure that-
There's a motion on the float to approve it as it is. Uh, now, if you want to make a substitute motion, you can.
No, I'm, no, I'm not trying to make a substitute motion, I'm just trying to make sure, uh, to the citizens of Newton County, the ones who, who, um, like our, love our cousins, saying we, we love Newton County, hi, and make sure that their project is gonna be on, uh, be a part of, of starting up first. And I was just asking, was by, by approving this list, would R L Cousins be a priority? It's all, I mean, it's a simple question.
It's not a bonded, it's not a real bonded project. Can you approve this list?
No, it's not on here. If you approve this list, it's not on here.
Can I make a substitute motion?
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the list with consideration given to bonding R L Cousins, cause that's what I, I think that's critical in this area.
So this is the thing, uh, sir, uh, i- if, if you're gonna make a motion that we include R L Cousins, uh, I think you probably need to make a motion that we include it, but when you say considering, you just leave it too-
Okay, include.
You, you leave it too open. Okay. So, um, Brittany just stated that there may be some things that we do that need to come off this list, is that correct, for financial purposes?
It would be my suggestion to stay at a bond amount around twenty-five million and shift the projects around. You can, you're, you're welcome to bond more if you want to, but like I said, we don't have the funding built in for that.
But wasn't, uh, R L Cousins on the S P L O S list?
Yes, it is on the S P L O S list.
So we got revenue coming in to pay the bond, and all, actually all of these projects have revenue coming in to pay the bond.
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay. So it's not, it's not like we're coming out of our pocket or the county's pocket to pay it, it's coming out of the S P L O S revenues. Is that correct?
Correct, but like I said, when we built the S P L O S list, we built in interest to the project. So for instance, the first one where it says general government fleet replacement, we built in three hundred plus thousand to pay for that interest. So we have built in interest on twenty-five million, not thirty, thirty million, thirty-five million, forty million. So you're looking at probably, like I said, the interest on the public safety fleet replacement at eight point four was around one point one million, so you probably would be looking at roughly an extra million dollars to bond the eight million additional.
So, so Brittany, let's, let's, let's make sure we give all the information, all right? So those funds that you're gonna utilize to pay the debt, if we go up in, there's the other items that's in the other, in the other column here, those are the, the funds that we're gonna use to pay for administration building, the Nelson Heights, is that Nelson Heights? Nelson Heights, the Trails, um, Washington Street, is that correct?
Mm-hmm. So those would be funded with cash, cause that's the thing, you collect over a S P L O S for six years, so you're not fully collected until usually around year six or until you meet your collection amount. So the bond just allows you to start projects early that you may have to wait two or three years to cash flow. So that, I mean, they're all gonna be projects that are funded under the S P L O S. The bond just allows you to start them now versus three years from now.
Yeah. Right. Um, let me get, um, Mr. Sims, um, um-
You got a substitute motion?
Let me get, let me get Mr. Sims. I'm sorry?
I made a substitute motion.
Yeah, move on. Do you got a second? You got a second? You second? Okay. Um, end of discussion. Mr. Sims, go ahead, sir.
Mr. Chairman, thank you so much. I just want to, um, state that all of the projects are approved S P L O S projects, which mean they will be funded by-
I just want to, um, state that all of the projects are approved SPOLOST projects, which means they will be funded by SPOLOST. What we're doing now, we've identified the bonded projects that we can go ahead and start on these particular projects first. If it's the will of the board, Cousins project could be a project that is not necessarily a bonded project, but it could be a priority project based on the board, that we can make sure that that's a project that's moving forward as well. We don't want to, we want to recognize the bonded, the smaller bonded projects, if you look at the dollar amount, if you look at some of the projects, the projects that we've identified bonded projects, they'll, those are projects that we can get approved and we can move fast on. If you look at some of the other projects, such as transportation, such as Cousins, these particular projects will require more time, even with the design, with the discussions, that's why those particular projects were not identified as bonded projects. The other bonded projects are very straightforward projects that we can go ahead and get those projects completed r- rather fast. That's why they are listed as bonded projects. All of the projects are important to us, we, we don't have no hierarchy of a project, they're all projects that are approved by our citizens at SPOLOST, and we just want to get all the projects completed.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, I got Commissioner, you done, okay?
I have a question.
Okay, I, I got you next, Commissioner Sims, go ahead.
I just want to make sure that, I, I may, I represent District Three, I have to, I have to say it. Um, because this district has been scarce in projects for years. Uh, so I just want to make sure that whatever we're doing, that at least, I, I want, I would like for all of them to be done, but I, I have to speak up about this, so I want to make sure, I'm sorry, you were about to say something, okay?
You have a fix.
Oh, you have a solution, okay, okay.
So, we could possibly, instead of the first priority, call them being six to seven months. We could look at that on like a, a year schedule, um, so we're probably looking more along the lines of sixteen million, seventeen million, instead of eight point three million down there. So, Jeff was mentioning he could possibly scoot some of the projects back, and we could, we could work Cousins into that, um, but all of that would occur. So, pretty much start August twenty twenty-three and then go into August twenty twenty-four. We should be able to have all of those, including Cousins, in, on that first year. Yeah.
So, if you would, if you would, if you would look at that, that where it says first priority cash, we would move the RL Cousins eight million over to it. Instead of six to seven months, we would save one year. And what that will allow us to do is start RL Cousins this year, as you know, you gotta go through, you gotta hire consulting, you gotta go through a design and public process. And then to get even, to get it somewhere close to where you can start construction, that buys us enough time from a ca- roughly from a cash flow to be able to keep all of the projects that we've got listed here and balance it.
Which is the same thing, yeah, same thing, it's the same.
Yeah, I mean, we're really not changing anything, except just the timeframe, because with this list, we were more looking at, um, short term, so within the year twenty twenty-three. So, this just puts us out about halfway through twenty twenty-four.
It's the same thing, any more discussion? It's on, it's, it's on now.
Well, yes, I'm just ma- just being clear, because you wanted it right, because I've learned from this board that you can get it in right, and then next day you don't have it. And, and it's very important to me, that I don't continue to tell my constituents, hey, tell my constituent lies, saying, well, hey, we voted on it, you, we gonna get it, and you don't get nothing. I remember that one million dollar. They get it, yeah, that one million that we voted on, that they don't got.
So, we're gonna let Commissioner Cowan's motion stand as it is, and it was second by Commissioner?
To the attorney. How can we make sure that, that RL Cousins, we just did, is gonna, within that one year, uh, I guess one-year period, that some part be done?
No, he just did. He just did, he just added RL Cousins to this.
That's all it take, I'm asking the attorney. I kinda trust this, this young lady, Patrick wasn't so good for me.
Jeff wants to clarify something also.
Ju- just want to clarify, what, what this allows us to do is start the project, move RL Cousins over to where we could start the project this year. Not finish it in a year, but get it started. Yep, remember, that project, under the best-case scenario, is, you know, eighteen, eighteen-plus months to go through the, the process of, of selecting and designing and public input, and then going out for construction. So, I just wanted to make sure that, I just don't want to get expectations that this would allow us to complete the project in a year. Well, we'll do our best to get it, you know, w- we'll get it underway and get it completed a lot sooner this way than we would have if we'd have left it where it was.
Let me just tell you, everybody's saying the same thing. Everybody's saying the same thing. We are. So, you, so every, all the projects that's identified here will get done. Uh, it, it may take maybe what, half, what, six months longer, six months to a year, maybe?
Yeah, because we'll need the cash flow, because, you know, like, you start with the design build, and then once construction amps up, is when the cash really starts flowing.
And have we, Mr. Chairman? So, have we identified which ones are starting, I'm sorry, I, I know they had, it showed up on the screen, but it went away, the other part, the one where you had the shaded area. Which ones are starting first? What projects are gonna start soon, like?
So, so basically, the schedule that you saw earlier was for the, the bond, the bond projects tier one. So, those are the ones that, if approved tonight, we would get started in February. We would start the process of putting out RFPs, selecting consultants, design builders. And as you can see on the, on this right here, it gives you an estimation, because things can change, we want to, you know, public input, may, you know, whatever. But this gives you an estimation of the time it would take to go through each of these steps and complete those projects. We will do the same type of development of a schedule for the other projects as well. But this was the priority for tonight, to make sure we got this going, because these start now, the other ones will start around, you know, August of this year, this process.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All in favor? It passes five votes, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda is item number fifteen, presented by Mr. Chester Clegg, our Transportation Director. Public Works is requesting approval to contract with Colliers Engineering and Design to negotiate the acquisition of easements for the Yellow River Trail project. It is time-sensitive, uh, for January seventeenth, cost seventy-two thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars, and the funding source is a hundred percent twenty-seventeen SPOLOST.
Thank you, thank you, Chester.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so in order to move forward with the Yellow River Trail project, um, we wanted to start by acquiring some easements for the trail. And the, um, the area we wanted to start with goes from Porter Dale up to the interstate, I twenty, and then across, um, from the, the river over to, um, Fairview Road, and a tie into the proposed, um, multi-use trail that, that goes along Fairview Road. There are about twenty-six properties, and I had, uh, those, um, attached to the packet, um, they're involved, um, that will need to, uh, to approach the, the owners to purchase the, the easements. The, um, we wanted to hire a consultant to do the negotiations, just like we do right-of-way for roadways. And I got prices from three different, um, consultants, Colliers, Atlas, BM and K. And Colliers was the, the least expensive at seventy-two, seven fifty, seventy-two thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars. They're used to doing G dot work and are very experienced in getting easements in, in right-of-way. The consultant will, um, get a signed settlement agreement, and then will bring the settlement agreements to the board for approval to move forward to closing. And Gerard and Davis will be the ones that, that do the closing for us, as, as they always do. So, I'm requesting that the, um, approval by the board to proceed with the easement acquisition for the Yellow River Trail, by contracting with Colliers to, um, to do the, the easement acquisition.
Thank you, sir. Uh, guys, let's seek a motion, please.
Move.
Thank you, sir, can I get a second? It's been motion by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five votes, thank you so much.
Chairman, the last, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the next item on the agenda is item number sixteen, presented by Mr. Jarvis Sims, our interim county manager. It's discussion and consideration for approval, contract for Berry Dunn. The strategic plan contract for Newton County Board of Commissioners, the contract amount is not to exceed sixty-seven thousand, six hundred.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Sims?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, so we have this agenda item before you all regarding a update to our strategic plan. We submitted RFP proposals for this back in October of last year. We had six submissions for RFPs, we, our committee interviewed two companies. Based on our criteria of the RFP, the price and the overall presentation, Berry, Dunn, McNeil and Parker were selected to provide our strategic plan.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, I seek a motion. Um, it's been motion by Commissioner Edwards. Is that second? It's been second by Commissioner Mason. Uh, any discussion? I got, I got five and I got two first, first two, yeah. I got him, then I got you, all right. Commissioner Cowan, go ahead.
Okay, here's my problem. I think that, uh, uh, the foster group that was here before is a sole provider, because they spent about six to eight months developing the strategic plan, and now we're gonna bring in somebody else to redo it again. I don't like that. I think we've got a good plan, we've had a good plan in place, and now we're talking about bringing in new consultants to look at the whole thing again and come up with something different. I don't like it, I think all we needed is an update of what we have, I think they were a sole provider, I didn't think you needed to go out and get somebody for that, because they already did it, they're unique. And it's just a waste of time and money, in my opinion, so I'm not gonna support it.
All right, um, Commissioner, uh, Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to ask, what's the funding source, um, because I don't see it here.
Our director can kinda talk about, Director White, talk about the funding source. So, if I can, uh, answer Commissioner Cowan's question, based on our, uh, consultation with legal uh, and our current procurement policy, we had to go out to RFP based on the dollar amount, which we did. Uh, we opened it up to any providers who provide this particular service, uh, where we had, um, on our website, as far as to submit proposals, um, you are, as far as, you're correct, as far as the previous provider for our strategic plan. Uh, we did, uh, have discussions with them about providing a updated plan, um, for whatever reason, we did not receive that. And we are going with our proposal before you all, the plans that we received.
The funding source, some way.
Funding source.
So, the funding source, because this project is going to obviously span over this fiscal year. So, the first portion of this funding source is in the BOC budget for FY twenty-three, um, we did build that into the budget. And then, because we knew we would need to start a new strategic plan, and then the remaining contract price would fall on FY twenty-four budget.
And so, in addition to that, would it be least expensive for us, instead of creating a new plan, um, to actually just maybe have someone to come in and take what we have and maybe edit, tweak? So, would that be more cost-effective to just tweak what we have versus having someone come in and redo an entirely new plan? And if so, do we know what that cost would be to just tweak what we already had?
Um, so, basically, the way the RFP was, it read that you would come in, wrap up the old strategic plan, so evaluate what we finished, what we didn't, and then you would build a new plan off that. So, that was the way the RFP was written, um.
And legal recommended that we do it that way?
Well, yes, and then legal also recommended that we move forward with, that staff move forward with presenting the RFP to the board as it was bid out and as it was, um, bid on, and then once we make our recommendations, the board is at liberty to, to go as they wish.
And for, let me jump in for a quick second, I don't think legal recommended that we, um, bid out a new plan. Um, they might have recommended that we, um, go out to bid, but not a new plan, because really, we supposed to update that plan. Um, not really build a new plan, uh, but I did want to put that out there. Um, that's all you had? I think it was, uh, Commissioner, what was it, Commissioner Sam?
Okay, I just would like to, um, and my apologies if this was sent to us, but I, but I try to read everything. I would like to see the work of these individuals, like what counties have they worked with, I would like to see background. Um, because I was just talking to the attorney, I was like, I'm in the wrong business, I don't need to be consulting with the government, because the amount that we are, are paying for this, so can, I would love to see information in regards to the, the company, their background. And I am looking at some of their info, I think this is them here, no, it's G dot, but I would like to know what governments they have worked with before.
I got you, I got Commissioner Henderson, Commissioner Cowan, and then Commissioner Edwards.
Uh, thank you, Miss Sam, you know, uh, we hire consultants in Newton County, this boy do everything. And in fact, we pay more to consultants than we help, than we helping the shelter, than we trying to help the folks who need, pay their rental assistance. I mean, we just got consultants, 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 and it's, and it seems to me is that we are hiring one consultant to do the same thing that the last one did. And at some point, I think we're spending a lot of money that, um, you know, I don't know, but I believe we probably could do some of the stuff in-house or locally, and it would save us a, um, probably lack of a better word, a ton of money. Probably not hiring this consultant, we need, we stop using all of these consultants, because the bigger bulk of these consultants taking a whole lot of our tax dollars and send to another county, and we getting no results from it. You know, uh, we hiring consultants on this, we hiring consultants over there for the Salvation Army, and, uh, for about three hundred some thousand dollars that supposedly got missing, and we haven't had a report yet. So, if we're gonna hire consultants, that's how I want for that to find where our money went, and how can we get it back? Those are the type of consultants that we need, somebody that's gonna help us, whether somebody keep on trying to tell us how we should act, what we should do, how we should spend the money, and when reading truth, if that been the case, you don't need elected officials, you need just hire consultants to do what we're doing. So, um, I don't like the idea of continuing hiring consultants, and most of them, we don't even know them, know what to do. So, um, you know, I think we take a long, um, thought process of maybe not hire as many consultants until we, you know, have information on them. Thank you.
Um, Commissioner, uh, Cowan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I want to say this, we're just doing an update of the existing plan. Okay, that's my, that's been all, my notion the whole time, we're doing an update of the existing plan. I don't know what your RFQ said when it went out, but if you ask for somebody to redo the plan, throw that out, because we don't need that. We spent eight months putting that plan together with city, county, school board people.
Citizens.
And I ain't doing that again, that's a long time. We got a good plan in place. We got a good plan in place. We need to have some adjustments to it, just to make sure that we know what we're, that we're still on track with things. But we've got probably one of the best plans in place. I have worked with the Fosters Group many, many years, uh, from the time when we, J.C. was at the city and I was at the city. We kept using UGA. No offense to the football team, but their Institute of Government needs some work. Okay, um, I got tired and they still, the last session I went to over there, they did the same old thing. Um, they actually come in and did a good job asking people, meeting with people in the community. Uh, there were representative meetings on the strategic plan. That thing was well done. And to me, the idea of redoing it and doing something different, I ain't doing it. I ain't gonna vote for it, and y'all go do what you wanna do.
Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, uh, the, so if, if, if we, uh, what type, kinda timeframe are we under to have this, this consultants put in place? And I have a follow-up question for that, too.
So, we're not on a real rigid timeline, but we would like movement on the plan. Our current plan ended, uh, twenty-twenty-two. So, we would like, you know, this quarter to kinda start having a plan in place.
Alright, thank you. Uh, so, so in order for us to, uh, talk through some issues, desires, requests as Commissioners, probably via email, right? So, um, through those commu, various communications with the Chairman, the County Manager and Brittany, and, and again, all the Commissioners, I would like to make substitute motion, we table this for a period of sixty days until we can, uh...
Would you like to hear from the Attorney first?
Yes, please.
So, if y'all would like today, y'all can deny, um, and not approve this contract, and then give direction to the County Manager to figure out how much an update would be with the current consultants. That is an option, or you could table it and then give them the same direction.
Can I ask one more question?
He got, he got, he got a motion, he got a motion.
Could I amend my, uh, my signature motion?
Yep.
Could we table this for a period of thirty days?
You can get a second, can I get a second?
Thirty.
It's been motioned that we table this for thirty days by Commissioner Edwards and seconded by Commissioner, um, Mason. Discussion first, Mr. Sims, go ahead.
As far as what the county attorney stated, is that part of the substitute motion as far as tabling and then having us re, uh, submit or contact the current strategic planners and see how much they would charge us to do an update, if that could be a part of it?
So, moved as slated by the County Manager and the County Attorney.
Second, thank you. Um, it's been motioned now that we table this with the stipulations, um, that the County Attorney, uh, suggested, and seconded by Commissioner Mason. Discussion now, Commissioner, um, no, well, you know what? Let me go back to Commissioner Sanders, because you...
Okay. Um, just wanna make sure, is thirty days gonna be enough? Because are we gonna, if you happen to find out that we need to put out another bid based on the information you go, that you seek, is thirty days gonna be enough? It's gonna be my question for that. And I just wanna clear up something I said. I'm a consultant and my real work outside of here, when I said that I wanted to, I'm in the wrong, my wrong line of business, I mean, I don't consult the government. So, I wanna make sure I clear that, because everybody take your words and run with it. But my question is regards to, is that enough time for you to?
Yes, I think it should be enough time. We will reach out to our existing partners with our plan right away and see if they can provide us some numbers as far as an update on the plan.
Okay. Commissioner Cowan then.
Okay, here's my question. Does our financial policy provide for a sole provider?
It does.
Okay. The people who wrote the policy, who wrote the plan are the sole provider. That's who you should be talking to. That's just how I feel about it.
I think sometimes that can be left up to interpretation, because sole, sole source is basically...
Okay, sole source. He wrote, they wrote the plan, they put the plan in place, and we're out here getting quotes to another whole plan. That just is insane. No, no disrespect to anybody, but I just don't like it.
Okay, so guys, so here we are. So, let's, let's make sure we get everything cleared up. So, exactly what you just said is exactly what we, what Commissioner Edwards just tabled to do. So, now, uh, Mr. Sims is gonna go back and contact the Foster Team, and he gonna bring that back before the board in thirty days, if not soon. Any more discussion? All in favor? Thank you, stand tabled for thirty days. Thank you, Brittany. It's five oh.
Mr. Chair, the next item on the agenda is number eighteen, alcohol beverage license. Number eighteen is the final reading for District Two Walgreens, number one-two-six-two-one, one-two-nine-fifty-five, Brownbridge Road, Covington, Georgia, three-zero-zero-one-six. The applicant is Clayton Schwint.
Commissioner Mason? Commissioner Mason?
I'm like...
Yeah?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to, um...
Since you just read it, you can just say so moved.
So moved.
Thank you, sir.
You know, I'm so used to reading the whole thing, that's why.
Yeah. It's been motioned by Commissioner Mason and seconded by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh.
Mr. Chair, we do have number nineteen, the final reading, Flash Foods, Circle K, District Two, forty-one-seventy-five Salem Road, Covington, Georgia, three-zero-zero-one-six. The licensee is Misty Wilson.
So moved.
Thank you, sir. It's been motioned by Commissioner Mason and seconded by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you so much. Um, next, we have, um, citizens comments. This opportunity that will allow citizens come up and make comments. You may come at this time, please state your name and your address for the record, please. Um, there is a three-minute time limit. Um, please come and state your name and your address.
Good afternoon, how are y'all doing?
Good evening.
My name is Thelma Stoudnall, my address is thirty-one-six-three Stone Mountain Street. I know everything takes time, but since you got a consultant, and hopefully she's got everything in place, but the last time she came, she was saying you had to go online to do application to get the money. But you got a whole lot of senior citizens out there that don't have computers, they don't have nobody to help them go online. So, that's an inconvenience to them. She's getting paid, but we doing, the other folk doing the hard work. So, wherever she's from, why can't she set up her office here in this county where she's taking our money from? And be on Monday through Friday? And that way, when people don't understand or they need some help, say she's getting paid to do this? And, and that, then she can explain to the people. And y'all can explain to the citizen what's taking so long to give these people some money? Because you got people out here hurting. Some people working two jobs and still can't make it. You got senior citizens that need help. I mean, these are the voters, these are the pe, we're the taxpayers, we're the voters. We put y'all in them seats. So, by right, the seat belonged to us. So, if y'all can't help us, who are you gonna help? And then, when you wanna audit everything in District Four, and, and they have to give an account for everything, you got money going to the gate of plantation, was they audited? I said if you heard the conversation tonight, they can't, they don't even know how much money or where it's going. So, I can't understand why you treat District Four and then other district differently you treat District One. Everybody should be treated equally in this county. So, what we say is Newton One, it's not Newton One, it's whoever want whatever they get. Money talk. So, I pay city and I pay county taxes, too. So, I really like to know where my money going, and like to say, everything you turn around is a consultant. So, whoever the lady is that's doing, supposed to be doing the consulting about the money, she need to get her act together. And y'all need to find out what happened to the other money that the other lady stole. And this lady, like I said, she's getting paid, but ain't nobody getting no money. So, while she's getting paid, think about the people that you're supposed to be out here representing. And I know y'all ain't gonna talk to me about nothing, so y'all not talk to me about nothing, because what I need to know, I'm gonna find out the hard way. So, thank y'all, y'all have a good night.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Please state your name, your address for the record, please. You have three-minute time limit, thank you so much.
Good evening, I'm Jean Carlich, I live at twenty-eight fifty-two Club Forest Drive inside of Fieldstone Estates. Um, I am a current board member of the FCA there in Fieldstone, past president and a forty-year resident. Fieldstone lies between both Newton and Rockdale Counties. Our Rockdale side has activity monitoring code enforcement. Our Newton County side seems to be absent. My question tonight and the people in Fieldstone that come to me, I have got to give them an honest answer. Is there a current code enforcement department in Newton County? Is it fully staffed? And what is a full staff? The following violations were tonight. They've been there for months and some for years. We cannot, we, Ms. Sanders came out and she tried, but they're back. And they're doing business well. Uh, at twenty-five oh-six Fairview Road, we have an ongoing junkyard, literally. At one time, true, over thirty cars in the backyard. Mosquitoes, rats, filth. Code enforcement did address it almost a year ago. It got kinda sorta cleaned up. They're back. They seem to be in conjunction with twenty-eight ninety Fieldstone Drive, which is a car repair shop. Now, code enforcement came out and addressed them. Well, they know code enforcement works eight to five, no weekends and no evenings. Tonight, when I came to this meeting, the garage door was up, the repair business was alive and well. This is at our entrance off of Fairview Road. I don't have to tell you if you ever travel Fairview Road. It's fast and it's heavy. When you turn into Fieldstone, if there are repair cars in the road and you have a car coming in the other lane, where you gonna go? You hit the parked car, you hit the car that's moving, or you let somebody hit you in the rear? We need help. Twenty-six seventy-eight Club Forest Drive has a large flatbed trailer, its name is Big Tex. It sits in the driveway. I'm assuming the man has some kind of a freight business, but it's there, and that's county code violation. Um, let's see, over here at twenty-six seventy-eight Club Forest Drive, um, now that's the trailer. Oh, at twenty-five seventy-nine Country Club, we have front yard junk. Now, I'm not talking mowing grass and trimming trees and, and doing maintenance. I'm talking washers, dryers, dis-repaired cars. We need help on our Newton County side in Fieldstone. Fieldstone is an old subdivision, but we're proud of it. We've kept it pristine.
Thank you so much.
But we're trying.
Thank you.
And we can't get the help we need from the county code enforcement.
Thank you so much. We greatly appreciate you coming.
So, do we have a code enforcement office? The last time I asked, it was iffy.
Can you, can you give me your address one more time? And your time is...
Twenty-eight five-two, Club Forest Drive.
Okay. Someone will respond to you in just a moment.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, thank you.
Anyone else?
Frederick Johnson, ten thirty-six Highway one sixty-two, Covington. Uh, we was able to clean off a cemetery on yesterday, a day on instead of a day off. We were able to come up with about, I think it was about fifteen to twenty volunteers, and we did work on the Poplar Hill Cemetery. We wasn't able to do all three cemeteries like I had planned, but we still planning on doing those other two cemeteries, uh, in the near future. I wanna thank, uh, Mr. Cowan, I wanna thank, uh, you Stan, and also, Ms. Lynn. Thank you for your donations, that we were able to, uh, feed these, uh, people. Sheriff Brown, thank him, he, he furnished, uh, a good bit of, good, good bit of, as he, as usual. So, we thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Um, Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll be brief. Uh, th- thank you for the cleanup in, on Poplar Hill, Mr. Johnson. I know I had seen that cemetery firsthand a couple times, and it was in, it was in need. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, wanna take a moment first to say happy new year to everybody. Um, I missed our meeting last, uh, week. Um, I was fortunate enough to, um, actually be in Mobile, Alabama, last week with the Economic Mobility Leadership Network through, uh, the National Association of Counties, uh, where there's about seventeen states that are represented, uh, uh, and a part of this particular program. We did about five different sites. Um, the first site we went to was Bishop State Community College, uh, really showing us how the technical college plays a major role in our communities. Uh, Georgia P. My Technical College is our technical college here. Um, and so, I have partnered with GPTC to really help, uh, be an integral part in our community. So, it was great to kinda see them really leaning towards, uh, their technical college as well. Uh, we also went to Flightworks Alabama, uh, where we were able to see several different planes, uh, so some of your major airplanes like Delta, American Airlines were actually built, uh, at this facility. So, they were showing us from an economic development or workforce development perspective, basically how they're helping to employ, uh, their community as well. Uh, we also went to another site called Africa Town Historic District. Uh, they also have a Netflix documentary called The Descendant. Uh, so if you actually wanna see what Africa Town is all about, you can go there. Uh, I know we previously had a conversation, uh, centered around, uh, Gaethers. Uh, what they did is they took Africa Town and they utilized it as tourism. Uh, and so, I'm gonna be having a conversation, uh, with our interim county manager to kinda see what we can start doing, uh, to really utilize Gaethers and some of the other locations within our community, uh, to utilize it as tourism, to bring in, uh, additional dollars into our community. There's also some discussion already going on, uh, where we're gonna bring in some African American history through our Welcome Center, uh, in the city of Covington. Uh, and then also some discussions about having some African American historical markers throughout, um, Newton County as well. So, we wanna make Newton County and take the rich history, uh, uh, of our African American history and really make it great. Uh, I do know at Gaethers as well, uh, previously, uh, Chairman Baines brought in someone that found, uh, an African American historic grave site. Uh, and so, we wanna be able to allow people to come in to Gaethers and see, uh, that African American historic grave site that was there, uh, and really utilize that from tourism, uh, as well. Uh, then, uh, we went to... The Innovation Portal, which basically their Innovation Portal just is, is a lot of, almost kinda like what we do with Newton County tomorrow, where we bring all the leaders together. We have the conversation centered around economic and workforce development to really help develop the community. So, it was an amazing, amazing, uh, opportunity to really see how Mobile, Alabama has developed, uh, themselves, and so... themselves and so I'm gonna be working to help bring some of those ideas back to Newton County to really help Newton County flourish, grow and to be all that it is desired to be. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Sanders.
I'm hitting the wrong buttons, all these buttons over here. First, I want to thank my Newton, my District Three neighbor, I would definitely stay on top of that with you in conjunction with our county manager to make sure that we assist you in Fieldstone as well. But I attended the University Cancer and Blood Center today, their ribbon cutting. It's a new center that's in Newton County to work with cancer patients and the stories that I heard were just amazing of the people that they actually cured from cancer. For those who don't know, I lost both of my parents a year apart around seventeen, eighteen years old to cancer. My mother breast cancer, my father multiple malonia. My mother was fifty-two and my father was fifty-three. So I'm a huge advocate and I had a scare probably some years ago where I had to have a lung removed as well. So that center is very important to have here in this county. So if you get a chance to go over there, the doctors are just phenomenal, I've heard some of the stories from the patients where they were written off by other doctors and they actually went to this facility and got cured. So we have a pillar here, well, a future pillar that's gonna be here in the county to help our residents as well. And my other, just note, just January twenty-first, which is this coming weekend's our vision board party at one o'clock and then March fourth is our Health and Wellness Fair and that's all.
Thank you. Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you. Just a quick reminder that Corona is not gone, it may be rising up a bit, it's ugly head. Glory be to God that we have shots that we can take that may help us, but don't forget about it, it's still here. There's no oxide that's still here from these big old plants. The gases from the landfill is still here. So it's still in our community. Might as well say something briefly about plantations. To be did I know, plantation was not a good place for black peoples back when they were coming up and probably back, far back as my grandfather. There were women raped and beaten and did whatever they wanted to do to them and where men were hung when they didn't want to work as fast as much as they wanted to and feared they were hung out there. So I don't know how we can educate somebody to go to a plantation and when you see all them open fields out there, ain't nothing but mass graves. I know because we had a survey come down, I think from the University of Georgia to the grave sites and plantation, that was what were there. So how can we tell our children that was something good? It wasn't good back then, so how's it good something now? What we need to do is to get rid of it, but in lieu of the taxpayers' dollars, we need to stop funding it. And there's no excuse, no, no use you can use for a plantation. And if you think there's a good use for a plantation, just read your history. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Cowan.
My biggest concern right now is, is our lack of insurance and as that tornado went through the southern part of the county, what would have happened if it had come through Covington? We got this building, courthouse, administration building right there. That would break us to get those fixed. So Jarvis, I would ask you to get with your risk manager. And I know we've had an issue with employment discrimination. They can write all kinds of lines of insurance, particularly on property, motor vehicle, I don't even know if we got public official liability anymore. I think they cut everything out and that is just getting on my nerves. We can write all lines of insurance without employment discrimination, we can just set that off the side. But we need to get some insurance in here. We can't, we can't build parks and build public facilities and not have liability insurance, can't do it. That's, that's neglect on the county's part. And we can work around the issues that we've had in the past, we'll work around them, but we gotta get our property insured, we gotta make sure our liability's covered. We gotta have general liability, we gotta have property insurance, we gotta have public official liability. Boiler and machinery, if some big plant goes out, big pump goes out at the water plant, what you going to pay for it? Hope everybody's got enough money to pay for it. I mean, it's expensive and we better get it done. I'm just saying, we need to get that taken care of. Other than that, I'm good. By the way, I've had some medical issues. I know the chairman knows about this, I've talked to him about it. But when I was in Baton Rouge, I had a spell, I ended up in Baton Rouge General Hospital for a day. But they finally figured out what was wrong with me. So I'm coming back. So I know I've been a little subdued a little while, for a little while, but anyway, that's what I'd like to see happen.
Thank you, sir. Guys, we do have a need for executive session tonight. We do have a need for executive session tonight for possible land acquisition. So there may be a potential for a vote. I seek a motion that we move into executive session. It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Hopefully this won't take long at all. All in favor? We stand in executive session, guys. We're coming back here. It shouldn't take long.
That would do what?
Move back to Congress, please.
Oh, you said move back in the executive session.
Moving back to our regular...
Yes.
It passes three oh, thank you so much. I seek a motion that we adjourn, please.
So move second.
It's been motion by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Cowan. We stand in adjourn. Thank you so much.